Well, I am glad to see all of you. I pray your New Year's off to a good start and blessed and happy new year to you. The light is already shining, right? A season of epiphany is a season of light. And for us folks in the northern hemisphere, that's probably a good, good season to have right now. We need light because it's a lot of darkness. But it's slowly getting more light, right? My mom is always excited at the winter equinox when just every day, a couple more minutes of sunshine, every day. So, but yeah. Well, how about we begin our time of study with a prayer? Let's pray. Lord God, heavenly Father, we thank you that the light is shining in the world and is shining in our lives. Jesus Christ, the light of the world shines forever. And we thank you for this precious gift. Be with us as we study your word today, especially as we do an introduction to Mark's Gospel and send your Holy Spirit to enlighten us by your truth, by your word and promise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Well, we, I gave it away, we are going to study Mark. And if you like a fast-paced, action thriller with tons of details, you're in the right class. This gospel goes quickly. That's why we're going to study it for the next 30 weeks. No, I'm just kidding. So what we're going to do, and just to give you a bit of an overview, is we, so we've got the month of January to enjoy Mark. We're definitely not going to try to get through the whole gospel. In our gospel readings for January, a couple of the Sundays, we have Mark, chapter one. If we would have been celebrating the baptism of our Lord today, we would have heard part of Mark 1 today. And then later, we'll hear more of Mark's Gospel. So we'll do an introduction to Mark today. We'll do chapter, we'll do, we'll figure out, we'll wrestle with the synoptic problem tomorrow, or tomorrow, next week, I'll be wrestling, I don't know what, maybe with my pillow tomorrow morning. Tomorrow's my day off. Anyway, yeah, you just got back, you can take a day off, I know. But, so, next week, the synoptic problem and part of Mark, chapter one, and then, then the last week in January, we'll do a little bit of Mark 1, and then we're going to hit some of the high points of Mark. Where in chapter four, and we'll get to a little bit of that today, where they have this question, who is this? After Jesus calms the storm on the Sea of Galilee, who is this? That's kind of the focal point question of Mark. We'll get to that. And then also, the very, you know, when, well, this probably doesn't happen very often, does it? You know when a pastor's preaching, and all of a sudden it just ends, and you're like, that's it? Oh, wait, you don't think that, do you? Okay. But Mark's, Mark's gospel is kind of like that. It all of a sudden is just like boom, and it's over. And so we're going to, we'll talk about the abrupt ending of Mark's gospel too, the last week. And so this will give us some good eyes and ears to hear Mark's gospel. We are going to hear it through many of the gospel readings, especially starting after the Easter season. We're going to hear lots of it then. So, and we'll hear it time and again in January and a little bit along the way, but especially after that. So, all right, so Mark's Gospel, I don't know if you can see this one, the print isn't so great. Matthew, before I begin, let me give you, give you the genealogy of Jesus, so that you know, this is about a real person. That's kind of Matthew, Matthew's genealogy. You know, there's actually a song to Matthew's begats. I don't think we'll sing it as a hymn, though, but it's very biblical. Okay, anyway. And then Luke is, before I begin, let me tell you the backstory that led up to all of this, right? Luke, Luke does the research to everything to figure this all out. And then John, before I begin, let me tell you why it's important to believe that Jesus is the son of God. John has this beautiful prologue at the beginning of his gospel. And Mark, let's get down to business. Mark moves quickly. It's not, you know, you, you're, you're not going to be waiting around to see how things go. You'll just be like, whoa, what just, we, what chapter? Middle of chapter one, and we've already had the baptism of Jesus, the temptation, he's starting his ministry. Whoa, what's happening here? Well, Mark is fast-paced. So if we look a little wind-blown after the class, that'll be why, all right? Okay. But before we do that, it's important for us to know, and you've probably done lots of this over the years, but when we're reading the Bible, how do we read the Bible? That's super important because this opens up the scriptures to us, everything that we're looking at. So how, how do we read the Bible? And that's, so instead, I'll teach you a German dance called hermeneutics. Now, that kind of sounds like a German dance. Herman created this dance called hermeneutics. No, it's from a Greek word, and it really is just about how we read and understand the Bible. Because, as you may have noticed, people have read and understood the Bible, and you get these varying traditions, still in the Christian faith, that have different things. And so how we read and understand the Bible is very important. And, and as much as it would be beautiful to say, oh, I'm going to come to reading the Bible with a completely blank slate, right? I'm just going to read the word, it's impossible to do that. So we need to be honest about our preconceptions before we come to God's word and understand what they are, so that we're aware and we're not misusing things, or misusing, or reading God's word improperly, but we're remembering and understanding what we're coming with and what we're bringing to the text, because we bring something too. So, one of the things we can do is remember this phrase, everybody say it with me, context is king. How about it? Context is king. I thank you Pastor Ogo. So, context is king, or if you really want to impress your friends, I think I maybe said this, you can say, context is melik. That's the Hebrew word for king. So your friends will be incredibly impressed if you do that. Just like all of you are incredibly impressed with the phrase this morning. Okay. Ah, yeah, you know, I feel like since I was born in the hometown of Johnny Carson, that he was at his best when he bombed. So hopefully I can be at my best when, when I bomb. So, okay, good, good, keep it up, keep it up. Okay. So, maybe I gave you this example before, if we've done Bible studies. You know, someone, it's, it's suddenly, it's three, it's the year 3024. And, you know, someone is coming to this area that is now called, what's a fun name that this place would be called? Pardon? Fergus? No, 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 like, something fun, like, I don't know, like, I don't know, Upper Canada, I don't know, Lower Canada. No, I'm just kidding, I'm, you know, trying to think, you know, now we don't use those names anymore. Anyway, we come to what the place was normally known as Ontario. This used to be, oh, this was where Kitchener was. And then they're digging, and they dig down, and they find these, this, this house and these remains, and they see in there, and they're like, oh, we can find out about what life was like. In, in, in Kitchener, it looks like this book is dated, the, the print on it says, published in the year 2005. Well, what was life like in Kitchener in 2005? Let's open this book and take a look. Harry Potter and the Chamber of Secrets. Okay. What was life like in Kitchener? Wow, this is cra- okay, right? For those of you who don't know the fun Harry Potter series, right? That's, you know, not true to life, right? You wouldn't look at that book and say, oh, this tells us historically what was happening in, in Canada, or even if you're talking the UK in the late 20th, early 21st century, right? This is not going to happen. So it's important to have context down. If you know the context, you know the backstory, you know how this all fits together, then you can understand maybe why this is written, what's written there, and how, how it's done. So you need to know the context, because otherwise, if you don't know the context, you don't know how to interpret the words that are there, right? Because otherwise, we might think that there was an incredibly talented wizard named Harry, who had a big scar on his head, that lived in Kitchener around 2005, and that would not be the case, right? So, context is very important, and so we have to have that context. So, okay, stop pastor, right? What are the contextual questions? Whoops, I skipped past that. We're, we're going to ask, who's the author, right? And you think, well, pastor, you know, God's the author of the Bible, right? All Scripture is inspired by God. Yes. Who does God use to put ink to a parchment? Or first, you know, to speak it orally, right? And then put ink on some parchment, on, on some nice made-of-reeds, right? Who does that first? Who are the people who first receive these words, right? Because it might be written in such a way that, that there could be some specific insights actually for the people who receive the word first, too. So who are the original recipients? What's happening in the times then, right? What's happening in those days? The historical setting, around what time is it written? Date, right? No, that's not like Friday night date night. What, when was it written, right? What date? And then, what about the composition? How's it composed? What does the writer use? And what kind of style does the writer have? So all those things are very important. You're thinking like, well, we're studying the gospel of Mark. Pastor, why are you asking stupid, obvious questions like, who is the author? Because, well, it's probably good to ask those questions anyway, right? So who's the author? The first words in the, in the Greek text are according to Mark, right? They're right up at the top. And so, so the question is, Mark was a disciple, right? Wait, huh? Who's Mark? Remember Mark from the Bible? Any ideas? Who's this Mark fellow? And maybe we should ask, which Mark? Or how does that all work out? Well, so, the, when we're looking at how the Bible is, all the books are put into one, and we, we talk about how they're made, and they talk about it as a canon of scripture, it's really important for us to, sometimes we look over this, the church fathers. And who are the church fathers? Well, they are the wise folks sitting among you, male, female, that have been here for years. No, the church fathers we're talking about are the pastors of the early church after the apostles, right? Couple centuries after. And, and I admit too, that these guys often are just glossed over, you know, like, let's get to the Bible. Okay, that, yeah, okay, so we're going to do the word of God, let's do that stuff. And then if any other historical stuff, be like, oh, maybe the Crusades, that was tumultuous time, we better look into that. And then, oh, that guy named Marty, right, in Germany? Maybe we should look into the Reformation time? And then, okay, what has happened historically in North America? But the church fathers are the go-to for the church, right? Because some of them are, they're, they're writing from the words that were given by disciples of the apostles themselves, right? So this isn't just like, the pastor had a good idea, you know, and he had this plan and vision to, let's make Rome a Christian city, and let's, no. These are guys who actually have connection to the apostles. And so what do the church fathers say? And we'll get into the church fathers a bit with Mark. The church fathers tell us that Mark, who's Mark? He's a close companion of Peter. So, so that's the Mark we're talking about. And so, we're thinking, okay, so who, then, then what's the basis? If, I don't remember Mark, he's not one of the 12 disciples, okay, spoiler, he's not one of the 12 disciples. How does he get his info? He's a close companion of Peter, right? So Mark's gospel is based on the preaching of Peter. This is what the church fathers tell us. And, and so, this is what you'll start to see in some of this. Mark's gospel, because it's like, I'm self-diagnosed ADHD, right? So it's, it's kind of an exciting gospel, because, you know, you get going, and all of a sudden, it's like, go, here you go, go there, you know, squirrel, well, he doesn't have squirrel in the text, but that's kind of, and so, Mark goes like that, and the reason it goes, he's not presenting this chronological outline of everything, he's basing this on the preaching of Peter, his close companion, right? So, so, let's look at maybe a couple Bible verses that give us a little hint about Mark. First Peter, chapter five, at the end of Peter's first letter, right? Verse 13, if only we could do a Bible study on First Peter. I'll talk to Pastor Astley about it, maybe we can do one in the future. Oh, man. Okay, yeah. I hope that was just the bad joke, not you not remembering that we studied First Peter in the fall. Okay, good, good, okay. It was just the bad joke. That makes me feel better. Okay. So what, what does Peter say in, at the end of his letter? Because this is usually at the end of the letter, you're giving some greetings from people. What does he say? She who is at Babylon... Who do you think that is? Oh, no, they're probably some pastor that just doesn't know when to quit and keeps talking and talking and talking. Oh, another bad joke. Okay, no. Babylon is code word for Rome, right? So she who's at Babylon, the church in Rome, who is likewise chosen, sends you greetings, and so does Mark, my son, right? Is he saying he's the father of Mark? No, he's the son, his son in the faith, right? His son in the faith. So, and, and so, we've got Mark, this close companion of Peter. We're finding out a little bit more about him. So, this is the same John, Mark. If you look at Acts, chapter 12, we'll see a little bit there, where they are meeting, right? This is after James is killed, the first martyr, or after Stephen, he's martyred, the first apostle martyred. He's martyred by Herod. Then what are they going to do? They're going to go after Peter. Peter's in prison. All of the Christians gather where? In, in Acts 12, it says in verse 12, Peter escaped from prison, right? And when he realized this, he went to the house of Mary, the mother of John, whose other name was Mark, right? So all of the Christians are gathering where? They're having a sleepover at John Mark's house, right? Well, it's not so much a sleepover, right? They're fearful for their lives because of what's happening, right? They're gathered there. And so, this sort of John Mark, and then, there's a greeting also in Philemon, verse 24, that Paul says about Mark. And then I wanted to point out 2 Timothy 4:11. It's the book after 1 Timothy, if you're looking in the Bible. Yeah, so helpful. 2 Timothy 4, verse 11, and Paul is, you know, this is Paul to the pastor, young pastor Timothy, so it's not to a church, right? And he's giving these greetings, and, and speaking about Luke alone is with me, but he says, get Mark and bring him with you, for he is very useful to me for my ministry. This is also the Mark, okay, which is, you might think, well, that's nice of Paul to say, but that's probably not a big deal. Well, this is also the Mark in Acts, chapter 15, who goes with Paul and Barnabas on his mission journey, and then leaves and goes home. And, and Barnabas goes with him. And so that created kind of a little bit of a rift between Paul and Barnabas. But here, near, 2 Timothy is near the end of Paul's life. Obviously, they patched things up, because Paul says Mark's very useful for me there, because Paul was pretty disappointed that suddenly Barnabas and Mark have left on this missionary journey, right at the end. So, so Mark is, what, this is all saying, who's this Mark sort of fellow? He, the, all the Christians were gathering at his home in Jerusalem, and he is, knows them from there. He also traveled with Paul on a missionary journey for part of it, and he is a close companion of Peter. In fact, Peter calls him, you know, my son, Mark. Gordon Collins.
I really want to ask a dumb question here. You question there, which Mark? Is there any other Mark in the Bible?
Could you ask a longer question when I take a bite of the apple? So, no, there's no officially other Mark. Our logical conclusion is to say that all the Marks referenced in the New Testament are the same one, but there isn't this underlying absolute, you know, without any wiggle room, that it couldn't be another Mark, but it all points to be in the same Mark. That's why. People who are much smarter than us wonder, especially if it's the same Mark. I don't mean to belittle that. There are some brilliant people who go into reading scripture with a different context and set of rules, right? And so their, their question is about another Mark. But, but the, the, you know, there wasn't any real question with the church fathers or anything either about, you know, were there multiple Marks? It just wasn't something that the Bible thought necessary, we need to pin this down, because it wasn't a question for, for them. But yes, it's, I think we can say it's, it's just this one Mark, right? Okay, so what about the people? Who, who, who is Mark's gospel written for, right? We, we know from many other things, right? Paul's letters, who they're written to, right? They have titles. What are some of Paul's letters? Not all at once, go ahead. Romans, Ephesians, 2 Thessalonians, yeah, Galatians, all those, right? Yeah, they're, they're, they are labeled either for a congregation, an area where the congregation is, like, that's Galatia, it's an area, a city like Ephesus, a person like Timothy, Philemon, Titus, you know, those sort of things. Mark's gospel, though, right, is not a letter. What kind of format is it? It's, it's, it's a narrative, right? It's the words and deeds of Jesus. So, who, who are the recipients? Most of the time, we can, you know, we kind of try to see how is the document, how, how is the gospel written? So we might get some insight into maybe what kind of people they were, if we don't know exactly. But they're, one of the church fathers, Clement of Alexandria, he said, late second century, early third century, his, his thought, train of thought was probably written for the church in Rome, that they were the recipients, because where does Peter end up preaching? A lot late in his ministry in the church in Rome. And then, the, what Clement says is, based on Peter's preaching, hey, Mark, write this in, as the gospel, right? You're with him, you're, you're with Peter all the time, so write this gospel. The evidence sort of points in that direction, but there's no hard and fast, oh, it's the church in Rome. We can see some of these connections, though, for Peter's preaching late in his ministry, and, and where, where Mark was with him as well, because he's with him then in, in Rome. So you can see from that, Mark, my son, and Babylon, that reference to Rome, they're both included in kind of that same greeting, or from 1 Peter 5:13. Was there a question over here?
Do we know if Mark ever actually saw Jesus in person or met him? Would it have been after crucifixion?
So there's no specific statement that he saw Jesus, Mark, and, which is interesting to think about it, as my brain travels down another rabbit hole towards the end of Mark's gospel, I won't get to there yet. But could he have been one of the 500 brothers that Paul talks about in 1 Corinthians 15 that I saw at one time? It's possible. We can't say for sure. We just know he, he's with the eyewitnesses. So, but that might be a thing to consider when we think about the ending of Mark's gospel. Thanks for bringing that up. Yeah. Because, yeah, I think, yeah, Mark's gospel ends abruptly, and it might be, yeah, interesting way to, to consider that. Any other questions before we get to historical setting and date, except if you've already asked? Just kidding. Go ahead, Gordon.
I'll actually try and make this one a long one.
Okay, good, good, okay, go ahead.
I just find it interesting that the first mention of Mark, of John Mark, in Acts, there's an indication that he traveled with Paul and Barnabas, left them, for whatever reason. And then, when Paul and Barnabas went to set out again, Barnabas wanted to take Mark, of course Paul took Silas, and they split their ways. And now all of a sudden, Paul's, or Mark is with Peter? Like, that seems to be really out of the blue, because there was contention between Paul and Peter. Like, how does Mark get from Paul and Barnabas to Barnabas to Peter? Yeah, that was a good long one.
That was a good long one. I got a few bites of my apple of them, thank you. So, yeah, there is a large backstory behind this that isn't detailed in the scriptures, right? What was the old radio program, Only the Shadow Knows, or something, right? Like, only the Holy Spirit knows how that all worked out, you know? But obviously, things changed for Mark, and he's later with Peter, and he's there in Rome, and so, it's, yeah, there's a hu- you're right. There is a very big backstory that we don't understand, how we go from Mark leaving Paul on his missionary journey, and then Barnabas wanting to go with him, and Paul saying, too bad, I'll take my new friend Silas, he's my new best, oh, okay, that's not, wasn't quite a, quite, you know, grade seven and eight, new friend stuff. But, so, that's how, how that happens, how he gets from there. Yeah, only the Holy Spirit knows. Yeah. So there's hope for, for me and for you. Yeah, it isn't there, right? Yeah, thanks be to God for that. Okay, what about the historical setting? So, okay, there is, what, any, I'll give some major bonus points, if anyone can come up with this. I don't know what they're worth, the bonus points. You can spend them and get a free coffee in the parlor. Okay. So, what is the major event that happens later in the first century that Jesus predicted? And this is in the Palestine area, right? Ancient Palestine. What is the major event that happens there that Jesus predicted that is never recorded in the Bible?
The fall of Jerusalem.
And the destruction of the temple. And, okay, good, bonus points. Anybody remember what year that happened? Seventy, right? Seventy AD, right? Okay, so you all get bonus points, there you go, very good. So, when we're thinking about historical reality and dating and putting certain things in, this, this event is never mentioned in all of the scriptures, right? And why is that significant? Well, the event is incredibly significant, right? Because the temple is destroyed, Jesus' prediction is fulfilled. the temple is destroyed, Jesus' prediction is fulfilled. And wouldn't you think the apostles would include that in the Scripture writings as further proof that all of this took place? Unless, why wouldn't they include it? It hasn't happened yet. So we're looking at writings that happened before 70 AD, because you would include this major event, right? In, in the fall of Jerusalem and the temple. So, yeah, so, that means Mark's Gospel must be written before 70 AD. And, yeah, and so, then we're looking at probably even closer to the late 60s or maybe, or sorry, early 60s, late 50s as to when Mark is written. Now, some people like to think, I don't know how have you heard, but modern scholars talk about often, what's the order of the Gospels and when they're written? And some modern scholars will often say, well, what was written first? Mark, because it's the shortest, right, and so then everything expounds and grows off that later. It's kind of what modern scholarship says. But when we look back to the Church Fathers, once again Clement of Alexandria states that Matthew and Luke were written first, with Mark reflecting the, the preaching of Peter, remember, we already talked about that, this is, Mark's based on Peter's preaching. And then John providing a spiritual account written later. What does the spiritual account means? It, it means that John writes a uniquely different Gospel than many of the events that happened and are recorded in Matthew and Mark and Luke. So, so, the Church Fathers actually say, well, no, it's not based on the size of the writing. It was actually Matthew who wrote, and, and Luke were written first with Mark reflecting the preaching of Peter. Well, how do you get an order like Matthew first? Okay, that makes sense, right? And then, you know, in the order we have the Bible now, right? If, if it's Matthew, Luke, Mark, why doesn't the Gospel order go Matthew, Luke, Mark, John, right? Well, you can kind of see why those three are together, because they have many similar events happening that they record. I think a reason that Mark would be first is because of the, it's based on the preaching of Peter and Luke does this studied account, and Luke's not an apostle. He does it, he studies, he talks to the apostles and all that, but there's no one, so it's probably like Peter's next. And, and then, then Luke, and then John's last, because John's unique unto itself and, and written last. But that's just, I'm kind of little guess, guesstimates there. But look, it looks like late 50s is when Mark is written after Matthew and Luke. How is it written? Oh, this is the fun stuff. Okay, who are the main people in the Gospel? You'll never guess the first one. Jesus, it's always the right answer, right? There you go. Okay, now, though, what's unique is how does Mark write about Jesus? Well, we'll see as we study chapter one, he's definitely a man of authority. And he goes through, well, he's the casting out unclean spirits. But he, he's a man of authority. He has authority over unclean spirits. And he, and he teaches and preaches different with authority than the scribes and the Pharisees. So he's a man of power. And we'll see, but he's also someone to be feared. Jesus isn't your homie and best bud in Mark in a lot of ways. He, he's someone to be feared, and many people fear him, although we'll see in Mark, fear is the wrong response to Jesus. Fear's the wrong response. And what's kind of crazy is we'll see that response all the way to the end of the Gospel. You're like, oh, man, this is going to be a really depressing Gospel if, if, if everybody keeps always fearing Jesus, and you're not supposed to. But of course, Jesus is divine, right? He has these powers that only He, He can do. Still the, the wind and the waves on the sea. But He's very much fully human. And in Mark's, oh, yep, there's a question in the back, Tim?
Make a speculation on this when we say fear, because words mean things, and, and words and definitions can change over time. So I would suggest instead of fear, we could say respect it. Because fear in that context, like Christ is true God, he can do whatever he wants. And that means that little guys like you and me, it's like, like little ants to a human. But if you, but it's also good, so you respect him for who and what he is. Because he can do whatever he wants, and when he's on your side, he's on the same side you are.
Yes, so, in the whole of the Scriptures, now remember, we're talking about Mark's Gospel. So you will read very many other things that fear is not a bad idea when it comes to God, right? The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom, right? Right? So over the Scriptures as a whole, that kind of fear, especially when it's in the Psalms or the wisdom literature of the Old Testament, fear is akin to belief, right? Fear, trusting, trusting in the Lord. However, in Mark's Gospel, it's the wrong response. It's the wrong response. So, but this is, this is more, more unique to Mark's Gospel. And, and we'll see kind of, kind of why, and, so, yeah, Mark's Gospel is just a bit different that way. And so, don't fear Jesus in Mark's Gospel. And he's also someone who's kind of strange. You're like, what, what do you mean? All right, so look at one example. Okay, Mark 1 verse 43. At the end of, we'll get to this probably in two weeks. So, Jesus has cleansed a leper, right? And what does he say to the leper at the end of, of verse, or verse 42? Says, and immediately, and immediately, we'll learn about that, that's a key word for Mark, and immediately the leprosy left him, and he was made clean, and Jesus sternly charged him and sent him away at once. That's pretty weird. Jesus heals this guy, he sternly charges him and says, get out of here. That's not the kind of response you would expect from someone who just healed you of this bad skin disease that keeps you from being separated from every, every person. But, but we'll see that, that Jesus is doing that, and in fact, what happens right after this? Then he, he will get into it a little more. He says, see to it that you say nothing to anyone. Show yourself to the priest, offer for, and offer to the priest and offer for your cleansing, what Moses commanded for proof to them. And he went out and began to talk freely about it, well, wrong thing. And to spread the news so that Jesus could no longer openly enter a town, but was out in desolate places. And people were coming from every quarter. So he's, he's a little bit of a loner too. He wants to go off in these places by himself. And, and then, earlier, we see that, we're just, we'll just note this. Jesus has specific things that he is doing, and it may just appear strange to our eyes, what he's doing, but he's doing it for specific reasons. So, so Mark presents Jesus a little bit differently. Now, how about the disciples? The disciples in Mark are not much of models of discipleship. They aren't. Here's the reaction, what happens when Jesus stills the storm? They are greatly afraid. Wrong reaction. In Mark, that's the wrong reaction. Don't do that, right? What happens in, in chapter six, they are terrified when he walks on the water. They, what else? They don't know how to feed 4,000 people when Jesus has not so long ago fed 5,000 people. And they're still asking the same, well, where are we going to get the food to feed them? They weren't like, hey, Jesus, where are we going to get the food to feed them? They were clueless, right? And, you know, this isn't like, oh, I hate to ask again, but, you know, no, they don't, they don't even know. And Jesus even makes some comments about the disciples in, in Mark. Look at this one from 8:17. He wonders if their hearts are hard. That's no good. No bueno. That's what I have to learn to say as we go to Costa Rica. No bueno. They don't understand his second passion prediction, and they don't even want to ask. They're afraid to ask about it. And of course, by the end, right, what happens? All of them flee. Peter denies him. So, they are not models of discipleship. You will even notice that some of the familiar sayings that occur in Matthew and Luke, they are kind of abbreviated and show a lack of understanding from the disciples. So, and remember, this is based on Peter's preaching. So, yeah, what else? Who else is, who else do we, do we learn about? Well, guess what? The disciples aren't models of discipleship, but the minor characters, many of them are. Many of them are. Jairus, right, who's coming for healing for his daughter, and the woman with the issue of blood. The Syrophoenician woman, the father of the demon-possessed boy, these all come to Jesus believing. They come to him and they leave believing. The woman who anointed Jesus with costly ointment. The centurion at the cross, he's going to be a big one. The centurion at the cross, and then Joseph of Arimathea, right? These are minor characters, but they all display what discipleship means in Mark, to believe, to not fear. And then you've also got past that are the enemies of Jesus. And you know who those enemies are, right? The Pharisees, oh, no, don't say it, pastor. Okay, I won't. And the Sadducees, right? I won't say why they're so bad. And they, but these Jewish leaders, right, they're the enemies. Who else are the enemies? Demonic spiritual forces, which Mark calls unclean spirits. And then even his family, Jesus' family, are kind of his enemies. And then even perhaps his disciples act more like his enemies at times. Because they just don't get it. So Mark sets things up in a way that's a little bit different for us to consider all these things. I mentioned this before. I know it doesn't feel like it today, because I've been blabbing on around the background, but we got to get the context right before we're able to study and interpret properly, right? But I promise you that Mark is super fast-paced. And that, in chapter one, we're like, we're like seven chapters into Matthew by the middle of chapter one of Mark, right? Or no, eight chapters into Matthew, so. Yeah, by verse 15, you already got John the Baptist, his baptism and temptation, the beginning of his ministry. That's in 15 verses. So don't blink, or you're going to miss it. All right? What's unique about Mark's Gospel? Well, we talked about Matthew. Remember, Matthew has Matthew's begats, this genealogy. Luke also, after the early years of Jesus, has a genealogy. Matthew says, nope, we're just going to focus on the words and deeds of Jesus. So there's no chronology there. And then, one of the words that's going to be important, especially early in Mark's Gospel, and then it comes back again later towards the end, is this word immediately, or your translation may say at once. Or some fun ones say straight away, or, you know, whatever. What's the point? Oh, and in Greek, it's euthys, right? This is, this keeps coming time and time again. But it's Mark's cue that something important is happening. So if you read immediately, or at once, or straight away, that's Mark's cue. Hey, important, focus in, here's something happening. So early in Mark's Gospel, we're going to get a lot of the immediately's, and we're just going to be like, whoa, hey, oh, okay, slow down, Mark. Any questions about that so far? I'm going to give time for a few more questions in just a couple minutes. Just want to pause there for a second. Longer, longer one? Okay.
Go ahead. I, I find it interesting that if you think about the story of Peter throughout the Gospels and throughout the, the Acts of the Apostles, that there is a real flavor of Peter in this, in Mark's Gospel. Like, some of the things that you're talking about here, characterizing Mark's writing, sounds like Peter. And it makes me wonder if, you know, Peter, a mere fisherman, actually had Mark write his letters. Because he obviously was with him in the, in the first letter. Whether Mark was the educated one and recorded his, or wrote his letters for him, and maybe recorded a lot of the things that he was preaching or, or speaking to people about just so in case he forgets, or in case he's no longer around, that there's a recorded document of what Peter was talking about. And it just sounds like Mark was the educated one, and this sounds like Peter, not Mark.
Peter was the brusque, burly, ADHD maybe, I don't know, fisherman, I, yeah. Pretty, could be, yeah, and of course, this is a very oral culture, right? We're making the transition from, to more written things as the time the Gospels are being written down. Maybe just a couple other notes about what we're going to encounter is we have this Markan secret. Or, what's this Markan secret? Well, Jesus commands people to be silent and not talk about his miracles throughout Mark's Gospel. So, why does he do that? Well, it maybe makes sense that he doesn't want the unclean spirits to be speaking, right, and so he commands them to be silent. But he only wants those who understand and know who he is, is Jesus, the Son of God, to be telling anything else about what he's done or why he's doing it, right? You know how sometimes you think about how people can control the media output about what happens? I just want them to see this side of it or this. Well, Jesus is saying only people who believe in him as the Son of God should be, should be out telling what's going on. And if you don't have that fully grasped into, you don't grasp onto that, you're not the people to be talking about what Jesus has done. So, Jesus is also, we'll see in Mark's Gospel, he is Israel. So Israel is God's people, of course, but he's Israel reduced to one person. So he's Israel, and Israel finally gets it right in Jesus. Jesus does it right, excuse me, he lives the life that God's people never could for them. And God makes for himself a new people, and it will be through Jesus, his new Israel. So basically, it's God's people reduced down to one person in Jesus. So you've got God's people kind of down to a funnel in Jesus, and then out from Jesus, you've got this new people that are created, because Jesus is God's people reduced down to one person. He's going to get it right. Okay, so, we've got, the other thing to consider here is when you're reading the Bible, Scripture interprets Scripture, right? What does that mean? Well, what is unclear in one part, we might look to another part that's clearer. But when we're reading Mark, we're just going to read Mark But when we're reading Mark, we're just going to read Mark first. If Mark brings in other things that we need to consider, Mark will tell us. So we'll just read Mark for Mark's sake and we don't say, well, that's different in Matthew, or that's not quite the same in Luke, or how did it go? We're just going to read Mark for Mark's sake. And when there are other scripture passages that can inform us about that, Mark will let us know. I think that's what I just said. Oh, and that's just the fancy way for saying synchronic at one time or diachronic. Basically, we, sometimes we'll start to look at Mark through, you know, 21st century eyes. And so we're going to go back and we're just going to look at Mark through first century eyes as much as we can. Instead of looking at him from now or through the time, we're just going to look, what does Mark have to say? And how does he say it before we talk about anything else? And I think that's what I said, too. All right, any other last questions? Before I get kicked out and have to put this up. Okay, we will get into Mark, chapter one, next week, after we talk about the synoptic problem. Oh, great, Pastor Ashley's gone, you're going to cause problems? Okay, that was bad, too. Let's close with the Lord's Prayer. O Lord, remember us in Your kingdom and teach us to pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory of our forever. Amen. Thank you very much.